Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, would you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I welcome you this evening. We're actually going to have two meetings back to back. The first meeting is a special meeting that was called of the school board so that we can vote on some new hires. So we'll conclude that meeting then and go into our monthly planning meeting. There'll be a time for public comment in both meetings. When we get to the planning meeting, the public comment will be after each topic. Ms. Mason, would you do roll call for the special meeting?
Ms. Bate.
Ms. Ray.
Here.
Ms. Leopold Sharp.
Here.
Mr. Post now.
Here.
Mr. Robinson.
Here.
Ms. Shaefer.
Here.
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 This would be the time in the special voting meeting for public comment. If any of you wish to speak to the board, you're welcome to step up to the microphone and tell us your name and address. Seeing none, then let us move forward. I just need to report, and since this is the next meeting, I'll report this meeting, that we met on July the 17th following our compliant planning and regular monthly voting meeting in executive session as permitted by Section 707 of the Sunshine Act for the purpose of discussing negotiations. No official action was taken. And we also met prior to this evening's meeting, as was obvious for those of you sitting in the hall, as permitted by Section 707 of the Sunshine Act for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter. No action was taken. In Ms. Bates' absence, I've asked Mrs. Shaefer to do our personnel report.
Who can make the report first?
Oh, excuse me. We're going to add the superintendent's report to the special voting meeting first. There is an addendum which might not have made it there. Ms. Dr. Merkel.
The...
Ms. Dr. Merkel.
The Assistant President is recommending board approval of the addition of the position of a grade 6 to 8 Special Education Department Chairperson. This position will provide a structured leadership role at the building level for an important department at a time of leadership transition. The annual cost for the position is $1,600. While this is... While we are seeking approval of the position, the hire for that position is an annual hire and decisions can be made going forward as to how that's handled.
Are you looking for a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Second. Any questions? Ms. Mason, if we could have a short roll call for that.
Will you hand this roll call vote unless I give votes in contrary? Seeing none, motion passes.
Thank you very much. And now we'll move on to the Personnel Committee report that Mrs. Shaefer will share with you.
Sure. You have the personnel report before you, which includes resignation, leave of absence, and employment. Additionally, there is an addendum with two additional appointments, so note that as well. Would any board member like any of these items considered separately? Are there any questions on any of the items? If not, then I would move approval of the below-mentioned items and the addendum.
Thank you, Mr. Post now. Any other questions for Dr. Merkel? If not, Ms. Mason, we can do this on a short roll call as well.
This will be considered in the annual roll call, but unless I hear votes in the hands of the members.
Okay. Dr. Merkel, did you have any?
I do, thank you. Dr. Gully, if you would introduce our new hires, please.
Sure. Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
It's my pleasure tonight to introduce two new members of our York Suburban family. First of all, we have Alicia Erickson. Alicia is joining us after having taught in the Washington DC area in second grade. Over the last couple of years, she was an instructional aide at Yorkshire. So she is familiar within the district. And we have the pleasure of having her through a very rigorous role of different applicants that we have had in the process. And during that time, Alicia will be serving as a third grade teacher at Indian Rock. So we are very pleased to have her. She also has her husband Scott joining her this evening. So at this time, Alicia, I would like to say congratulations and welcome to York Suburban.
Thank you.
In addition, we also have Ashley Jane joining us this evening. Ashley is originally from New York. Over the last six years, she taught second grade, I believe.
Fourth grade.
Fourth grade, excuse me. Fourth grade in North Carolina. And she and her husband are relocating to the South Central PA area. And she's going to be a teacher, actually, I believe, I said third grade at Indian Rock, second grade at Yorkshire for Ashley. And Ashley's husband is working in Schoolville County, actually, so he got a teaching job as well. So Ashley, we welcome you to York Suburban as well. And at this time, if I can excuse the ladies to come out and join me. Any questions, comments?
It isn't... There aren't many people who get hired after screening their calls from the superintendent. Alicia, I called her and after screening my call, she decided to call me back.
Even though.
In her defense, she was giving her baby a bath.
It was halftime.
But it was one of those real excited calls when I... And that was just for the interview invitation. So you should have heard the call when the job offer came through. So welcome aboard, Alicia. Ashley moved from North Carolina on Friday. Allegedly has her apartment all ready to go. And so she has the entire week to focus on her classroom and have that ready. But she'll be filling in in that long-term sub role. Alicia's position was created because we had to add that final position. We held off as long as we could to add that final kindergarten position. But enrollment continues to grow, and so we pulled the trigger on that, moving an internal candidate from third grade at Indian Rock to Yorkshire, which opened the position for Alicia. And then Ashley has a long-term sub with a late request for leave. So we're thrilled to have both of you. They started this morning with new teacher orientation. And I'll embarrass you a little bit. How was the day for you? What are you going to say, right?
It was amazing.
So thank you and congratulations. Dr. Gully, thanks for seeing them.
Thank you.
Good to have you here.
Wow, just over the weekend.
Yeah. They had to close things out. And North Carolina goes much later in the school year and lots of things to close out. And so to move Friday and then...
That was between York and Schoolville.
I don't have that many things to ask you.
That would conclude the Personnel Committee report.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Oh, look, sir. I will adjoint this meeting. And then I will move straight into the agenda for the committee meetings. This may be the end of the table. So I'm calling the meeting to order. I have one item of discussion, and I want to preface it with an apology. I had intended to direct the board over the weekend.
Again, and I've neglected to do so. In light of the incredibly busy fall that the district is facing, both in terms of staffing, issues, negotiations, and everything else, I have a recommendation to make about committee meetings between now and the end of November, when several of us will leave the board. My suggestion, and Dr.... Mr. Post now and I have talked about this. My suggestion is that we continue to hold those committee meetings that have a lot of pressing business, where a lot of detail is done before the board meeting. That would be specifically facilities and finance. And my suggestion would be that for the fall months, that we consider handling the business that would normally be handled in committee for academic standards, policy, personnel, and communications at the monthly board meeting. So we would essentially act as a committee of the whole on any matters that relate to that. I understand from Dr. Merkel that the Personnel Committee meeting was canceled, and she's going to do that this evening with personnel matters. I think that it would give the administrators somewhat less preparation required for the fall. I think that if the administration feels it's important to have the... There was oftentimes a November academic standards meeting when the faculty brought forward classes for the following year. That would still occur. But the routinely monthly meetings, or maybe Communications has been every couple of months. Is that right?
Quarterly.
How does the board feel about the possibility of reconsidering those schedules? And we don't have to decide tonight. Those meetings have already been advertised. So if the meeting is held, it's fine. If the meeting is canceled, we do not have to advertise the cancellation. But to consider whether you have pressing committee work that needs to be done during essentially September, October, and early November. Mrs. Shaefer.
Well, as you know, I've always been very generous with my opinions, and tonight's no exception. Frankly, this is how many of us started our board careers, where we discussed everything at the board level. And I personally feel that that's a better way as a public official than to segregate some of the meetings and the committees separately. So I am completely in favor, actually, of doing all the committee work in the board meetings. I think it's less time for the administrators, as well as the board members, to spend one full evening here, a month, as opposed to multiple meetings here, not only for the board, but also for the administrators. And frankly, I was better informed when things happened in the meetings of the hall as opposed to separate board meetings. I'll give you some examples. I'm disappointed that the board didn't get... The full board didn't get to hear a run-through of the feasibility study. I think it would be who volus to have heard that presentation in a public setting, in a public meeting. That's just one example, and obviously just my opinion. But I have no objection to that. I would take, as I said, a step further and have all the meetings in the meeting of the hall, all the committees in the meeting of the hall.
I would tend to echo much of that. And perhaps as a way of kind of backing into the way we used to be, this idea of trying now over the fall months to do a lot of this during the committee as a whole will work well and perhaps others will see how it goes, you know, kind of thing. And can be decided then for the new year, what those who are on the board would like to do.
I would only add that I would agree that this would give us sort of a frame of reference from which to decide whether or not going forward with the new board members would be the preferred way or to maintain the committee status. I don't... I would ask how administration feels. I think that's only appropriate to see what input administration would have, but I'd have no objection either. Dr. Merkel.
We certainly support this. It will ease a load at a very difficult time in the coming months and I think streamline some things and help with communication. There are certainly times where we need some business tended to at greater depth. Quite frankly, they have typically been at finance and facilities. But we can anticipate agenda items and work with not just committee chairs, but the board leadership to see, to have opinions before meetings are canceled, to talk about what agenda items and how much of that should go on a planning agenda. Because we obviously have to be mindful of the length of planning agenda. But this will take some of... This will ease some workload for us as well. And that's not the goal, but it certainly is a benefit at this transition time.
And so I would suggest that Dr. Merkel and Ms. Mason, we'll leave it up to the board chairs to work with the administrators and to determine whether there should be standalone committee meetings or not for the months of... And I'm not sure, are there any committee meetings scheduled for August, Ms. Erwin? Okay. So I would ask you to look at your agendas and see whether you think it's appropriate, perhaps even for something like facilities, you know, you might skip August and schedule September or whatnot. But I'll leave that to the discretion of the committee chair and chairs and the related administrators. I just think that this is one time this autumn where this could be a good transition. Thank you. That's all I have for the planning meeting. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Merkel.
Thank you. And thank you for your support to that end. Under the superintendent's report, we have three items, and I've added an item that I think given... I'll talk about it when we get there. Let's start with teaching assignments. I had expected at this meeting to be able to share with you the Valley View and Yorkshire teaching assignments. We made some changes very late today. That's why this was not posted sooner for you, because we knew that there was the possibility of a correction because of some circumstances related to music. And so anything that you viewed prior to this evening would not have had that music change. But these are the teaching assignments for teachers this year finalized at noon today. So hot off the press. It's a comprehensive list. It's identified by building. You will see some changes. We've had some... Eric Hoffman moved from the middle school to Indian Rock at his request. We've had Lana Klutz move from Indian Rock to Yorkshire. We've had Patty Murray move from a reading specialist to a kindergarten teacher position. So we've had some internal shifts and moves. One of the exciting components of that is that we've had to move teachers in recent years because of the small size of our four elementary buildings. And that, when we initially started making those moves, it caused some kind of heartburn for some of our teachers. And now what we're finding is our teachers are requesting moves and finding them to be rejuvenating. And so that's been exciting to watch and see teachers really refreshed through that process. Our new hires are included in here, and so are there any questions on teacher assignments for the coming year? I have one just kind of anecdotally. When a change happens in the summer, how would I know as a classroom teacher to call and say, "Hey, I'd rather move over to that building"? How are teachers informed? That doesn't happen. Oh. The process begins in January. Teachers are given... Support staff is as well. But they're given a form. It's called the Future Employment Plans Form. And that form, that's an ancient form in the district. But we've revised it somewhat. And we ask them to tell us what their plans are with respect to retirement, whether or not they want... They're satisfied in their current position, whether they anticipate leaving. They were to change, where would they want to go? Do they want to change? And so it's on that form that they are to tell us their wishes. Okay. Because what can happen is a position suddenly comes open. Right. And we have to turn it around very quickly. That's what I... Yeah. And so if we have to post, then we lose all that valuable time. Sure. And then if... So a fourth grade teacher says, "Yeah, I'd like that second grade", so we post. They take that. Then we have to post for the fourth grade. Then we have to post for the domino. And so what we say is, "Inform us on this form", and then we're knowledgeable of that, so when an opening comes. For example, on that very form, Mrs. White... I'm sorry. Sometimes I get stuck on their names that I knew them by originally. Mrs. White had requested to move to kindergarten if an opening came available. Oh, okay. And so very late in the game this summer, the opening came available. And so we knew to call her and say, "Are you still interested"? Yes, she was. So we could move her, and then we knew the opening was in third grade. None of the other forms said, "I want to go to third grade". And so that's... Got it. Does that make sense? No. So it's that knowledge, and again, it's the intimate knowledge that our billing administrators have of their staff and their desires. And it's open dialogue. That's the beauty of it, is it used to be a little bit secretive. And I don't want to tell my principal, because they might get mad at me. But the reality is the principals have embraced the kind of change and transition that people are seeking, so. Good to know. Thank you. Nope. Good question. Thank you. Other questions on teaching assignments?
Can I write, Dr. Merkel, that we are fully staffed as of tonight?
Don't say it too loudly. No, we're not. I'd like to say yes and knock on wood. But we had a... You approved tonight a leave of absence for a custodian who fell off the job. And she does not mind sharing. She's been very public about it. Broke two wrists. So she's approved leave of absence. And so we posted. We have a candidate, and we're ready to hire, but we've got to go through the steps yet. So we're almost...
Almost, okay.
Almost fully staffed. Okay. Goals overview. I want to share with the board that we are revisiting the district goals. We have five goals. The board has approved those goals. We will complete those five goals. I'm not asking for any shift in that. The manner in which we presented them, you saw a series of action steps under them. When we look at our district goals, our district goals are framed such that the district leadership will provide the leadership of the action steps to achieve those goals. We will reduce some of those action steps because of the transition and the fact that we'll be operating shorthanded for a few months until we hire a replacement for Dr. Maloney's retirement. And so we will be coming to the board with a revised set of action steps in the coming weeks with the board's permission to reduce in some areas that will not have an impact on students. Quite frankly, things like job descriptions and things that are more support stuff behind the scenes that we're going to just simply have to reduce because of the reduced manpower. And so we'll be bringing that forth to the board with the board's permission. We'll be tweaking those action steps and seek reapproval of that. That's part of a larger transition plan that I've put together and will have prepared for the board for viewing again in later August. Questions? Okay. Opening of school overview. This is fantastic. Today was a really fun day. Dr. Ketterman, in her role as Director of Ed Services, is responsible for new teacher orientation. And we had 16 new teachers in this room today and with an energy that I would have loved to be able to capture in some sort of a massive bottle. But they were so excited to be here.
They have to sing.
They did have to sing. And yes, there's much more to that end, too. So these new teachers thrilled to be here. And Dr. Ketterman did a great job. Really took kind of a longstanding format of what we've done with new teacher orientation. And I asked her to inject some new frame, and she did. And just really hit a home run today with our new teachers. One of the things they do is take a bus tour of the district. We have a teacher who lives in the district. Actually, we have a few. But one in particular has been a long-term resident of the district. And I asked her, I said, "Now, what was that like for you"? She said it was incredible. She said, "I learned so much about the district that I've lived in for a long time". Now, I get that she might not say, "Well, it was a waste of my time", but the enthusiasm was really dripping. And we met for lunch, and we do a nice lunch at Heritage. And the administrators kind of spread out so that they're seated with their new teachers. And it gives them a time to interact. And again, it was just... The setting was better than what we've used in recent years. The round tables with people promoted greater dialogue. Just some really nice touches that Dr. Ketterman put on. It was a good day. The teachers were excited. At lunch, the teachers seated next to me, just were in the middle of kind of mundane... And she said, "I'm just so proud to work here". And I went like, "That's exactly what we want. That's exactly what we're trying to help our teachers feel, proud to work here". And so that was one of those... I'm taking that one to bed with me tonight. So anyway, it was a good day for new teacher orientation. They have three straight days of new teacher orientation. Tomorrow is in their building, and Wednesday they're back here under Dr. Ketterman. Dr. Furman and Dr. Gully are each doing a presentation with the new teachers with the idea of having them see and touch teachers beyond just their buildings. So three days of that. We have some training going on through the week. We had training today for a number of our veteran teachers in professional development. We have training for our middle school science and our ELL teachers on... Excuse me, ESL teachers on Thursday. And so some training throughout the week yet. Next Monday, you are cordially invited to join us for opening day festivities. It's going to look and sound a little different. I had a committee this summer of volunteers. Back at June rally, I asked for some volunteers to come forward and join in the planning of this. Dr. Ketterman, Dr. Furman, Mrs. Hossenfuss. We've been working since June to shape opening and have some interesting components, some of which you have contributed to already. And so we're going to be at the middle school. It's a little bit of an interesting dynamic, because we... The high school with the roof and the door frames, we're not sure what the parking lot's going to be on Monday. And so we decided to go to the middle school. But we're going to have a bit of an interactive approach, and so we'll be in the cafeteria. It's going to be crowded. But we believe that the setting and what we want to create and do on that day is most appropriate there. We've also, some years ago, as a part of our financial concerns, reduced the number of days that our support staff was working. And so they haven't been a part... They've been invited, but it hasn't been a part of the expectation for them to report to work. In other words, they weren't paid to come in for opening day festivities. We've been looking at the concerns with helping the support staff recognize the level of respect and value we hold for them. And so we rethought that decision that was made a number of years ago, and we brought them back in. We've invited them to opening day. We've already gotten some positive feedback to that end, that they feel more a part of things. So our support staff will be coming in, and we have special training set up for them at the same time that we'll be doing some training and opening day festivities with our teachers. So you are welcome to join us. While the invitation says 7:45, it's really kind of a flexible start time. Teachers will be there largely by 7:45, but it can be really any time after that. Middle school, business casual, and if you had some orange or black, that would be great, too.
I mean, through the cafeteria door at the parking lot, will that be open?
That... Yes, that will be open, yes.
Cool, yeah.
Okay. Football started today, and band has been in operation. Cheerleaders are out there. We've seen a lot of official and unofficial practices, but official practices started today for football, which is a... That's an important day, because you see and you hear them, and they're very visible, and it just means we're starting. Why football? Because they get an extra week for heat acclimation. So today was an interesting day for heat acclimation. But they're here this week, and then the rest of fall sports start next week. Monday, our teachers are in, two days of in-service. Our students start back on Wednesday and Thursday, dependent upon their grade level. Really excited. Lots of great things happening with the start of the school year.
Of the 16 new teachers, how many of those are new to the profession? Almost all?
No.
Sorry, I didn't mean to catch you off guard. Roughly, fine.
Mrs. Mason, I thought she would know this answer, because... Oh, that is not true.
Don't worry, don't worry.
Seven. Seven.
New to the profession.
Give or take. At least five. At least five.
Somewhere between one and seven.
I'll guess 16.
It occurs to me how big that is.
I'll get that.
You know, starting in the new... New in the profession and...
High school, social studies.
I'm sorry.
Isn't there math?
Math, thank you. Middle school math. Three. Oh, come on, Shell.
No, honestly, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Every time I add a teacher, she asks...
I mean, as a teacher, I just know how important that is. Your first job is, you know, it's so important, and the first-day activities are big.
Yep, there's three. Four, that's four. Good, keep them coming. You're helping me.
Don't worry.
Yeah, but I'll get you that. But we do have five at the high school, five at the middle school, and six at the elementary level, so. Other questions on opening?
Sort of.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
But I have a bus question. Is this the time to ask a bus question?
It can be. That's opening.
Which would be possible feedback from the new routing?
I would say that largely our feedback has been positive. We had a couple of calls early on, I would say not more than three or four calls, asking about bus stops. A reminder to the board with the new bus company and the addition... Or excuse me, the expansion of our bus zone. You remember that a few people came to the board. A few people came to us over the course of the year, asked us to revisit some of the walk zones. We did do that, and we agreed that some of the walk zones were more than we were comfortable with. In addition, we asked PennDOT to do some hazardous road studies. The declaration of Midland and Hill as hazardous roads tremendously reduced the bus zone, dramatically reduced the bus zone on this side. And then students on the east side were walking pretty extensively, giving us the motivation to reduce that even more. And so we, in reducing walk zones, we increased ridership. Well, that means additional buses and/or additional time on the bus. And so we did some things to counteract that. And Mrs. Mason worked with Nick Stod, the administrative assistant, and they sent out opt-out requests. If you were going to opt out of transportation for the year, please let us know, so we're not routing you. And we got a very good response to that. We sent out a second opt-out once the bus routes were distributed in case there were any additions to that. So we had a number of people opt out. But the second thing we did was if students were being required to walk up to a mile and a half or two miles, depending on level, as... bus stop hub as opposed to your corner. And so, while people may have been used to closer bus stops, we didn't believe it to be a hardship, and we save a lot of time if we're picking up at hubs as opposed to stopping every corner. And so, with the hubs, some people were calling that were used to the every corner, three or four calls we received on that when they initially went out. We explained the thought process behind that, and we had no more pushback. We hear that there were pockets of loud cheers as people went out to their mailboxes and now found a bus card as opposed to you are a walker in some zones that people had concerns. We heard that from our PTO and boosters, that loud cheers went up in a particular neighborhood and so on. So, more positive, way more positive than they could.
Opting out, is that just for secondary students or for all students?
For all students. So, if I was gonna drive my child to school every day or...
I fully understand this means, lizard's ice now, it doesn't matter. You can't get on it, okay.
And I've added an item under the superintendent's report, and that is the stadium and the access to the stadium, and we've rolled that out. The board is aware that we had a plan, the board approved the plan for how we were gonna provide access to the community, but in a restricted way that has not occurred before. The thought process behind it is that our stadium is a teaching station, so when our phys ed classes go out or our elementary students walk over from Valley View for recess, it was a wide-open, insecure area, and we were uncomfortable with that. We would see the Valley View students walking on the track, and there were folks on the field that we didn't have any idea who they were. We would never allow a visitor into a building that way. We had concerns about that. Additionally, there are times where a teaching station, a phys ed teacher would go out to use the field, and it was being used by a trainer, working for another organization and training their clients, and there were one or two times where there was some pushback from them, and when the teacher asked them to leave, that it was teaching time. We had some incidents on weekends and off-hours that questioned the level of security of the stadium. And so, with all those components together, we believe now is the right time as we put additional resources into the stadium. As the turf was completed this summer, we've been advertising all summer that it will reopen August 1st, but it will be with limited access. And so, in that advertising, we tried to be as proactive as possible, but lots of folks don't pay attention to it till August 1st. The reality is, August 1st, we were supposed to have a turnstile installed. That turnstile would work with a card access, so if you received your card, you would be able to swipe into the stadium at X hours. The turnstile did not arrive, but we were committed to that August 1st date, so what we did was, we put a lock-and-key system in. So, there's a padlock, and then, we just bought a lot of keys, so that people would have access August 1st. So, if you came into register, you would get a key on August 1st and a card, and as soon as that turnstile's in, we'll destroy the padlock, so the key, rendering the key useless, but your card will now work at the turnstile. And so, it was a great intermediate plan. We have registration available. You need to provide proof of residence, whereas the track used to be open to everybody, the stadium was open to anybody from anywhere, we just, the plan called for the stadium being accessible to residents of York Suburban. It's for a $5 fee. That $5 fee pays for the additional technology that had to go in to support the turnstile and the card reader. It also shows some ownership that, okay, I wanna do this, it's purposeful, it's intentional, I'm registering for it. It also, if we're putting in that technology, it, the users were paying for it instead of all the taxpayers who aren't using, and so, that $5 fee was to do that. It is an annual fee, because we want to see that they continue to be residents, and that if we make any changes in hours and/or guidelines, it gives us the opportunity to communicate with these folks. It's a $5 fee per adult in the household, and so, a couple, a married couple, a couple, they would each pay $5. Students and preschoolers do not have to pay. Students, their cards will give them access, and preschoolers may come in with their parents. And so, that's...
Was it elementary or preschool? What about K-1, 2?
K-1, 2 has, they can come in with parents.
With parents, okay.
The response, we have had twenty-six cards, twenty-six cards as of 3 o'clock today. Cards and keys have been distributed. Largely, the feedback in person has been extremely positive. So, those folks who are coming in have expressed things like, "Thank you, we appreciate, we're gonna feel safer as well." Only one person of the twenty-six came in with reticence and frustration. We have had some callers who are non-residents express concern that they have, that they no longer have access, and we have had some Facebook activity that we see and we've had shared with us that has shown some frustration. We have, under Hot Topics, we've got the guidelines and the rationale there. There was an article in the Pride that went out, and it was very purposefully timed, so that it would go out right at that time. There was an article in the newspaper today. I'm not sure if there's anything more than we can, that we can do. I am pleased with the vision that the athletic department and the high school administration put into this. We have been asked to rethink may retirees from the district have access, and the recommendation from the committee that structured this whole plan is that, yes, that we should communicate with our retirees, that they may do so. We did get a request, if seniors have a gold card, may they have? And the answer is yes, they may have free, they may get their card for free, but they still have to come in and register. And the third request we got was alumni, if they could have access. And we are reticent to do that. If they live in the community, they certainly may, but to go beyond that, we fear it will open doors that we're working to close.
Only the track and the stadium, right?
Correct. The Trojan Field remains accessible.
The other field and the tennis courts are still accessible.
Twenty-four/seven, yes. The stadium will be accessible to those with card access at some restricted hours, between 11:00 PM and 4:00 AM, we're restricting it, and during school hours in the fall and the spring when it's a teaching station. Other than that, during practice hours, it will be open to the community, and again, Trojan Field will be open twenty-four/seven.
Trojan Field's heavily utilized by everybody.
It is, yes.
Have to get in and out to get to the stand, the, you know, the booster clubs come in and out. Are they getting cards?
They will have cards, and we're talking largely about the turnstile, but we then had to secure the other side that's near the baseball field, but that goes out to Valley View. And so, what we've put in there is a roller gate with card reader access. So, our maintenance department has essentially like a garage door opener that opens and closes that gate. There's also a, right, but I wanted to use a politically correct term, the person gate. There is a man gate next to the roller gate, so that, for example, when the Valley View teachers come over with their students, they can access it and/or the booster club, the band.
Any swipe, any swipe card will work both of those gates, is that what you're saying?
Only if programmed to work that. So, okay, so, that's a second entrance. The cards that the community gets will not, because our security system is here at the main gate. A fun story with that is, they first installed the roller gate, and it kept opening and closing, and randomly, and nobody could figure out why, and they finally realized that the antenna was too high, and so, any garage door opener in the community was opening it, and so, we fixed that problem.
Yeah.
The stadium looks incredible. The stadium looks phenomenal, and if you have not seen it, you can't get in, but if you come to my office, it is the second-best view of the stadium on campus, and it really, the athletic department and the high school administration did a phenomenal job. Mrs. Mason weighed in on that as well. We had a very large committee of folks looking at the color of the turf, the stripes on the turf, all the detail, and it was quick for me to say, "You know what? I'll take veto power. You guys decide." They did some things that I probably wouldn't have selected. Every five yards, the color of the turf is different. It looks phenomenal. They just did a really classy job. The Trojan Head in the middle of the field is so much better than the Y.S. The sound system will be up and ready for the opening game, or games, and real excited for that. We're testing that in these coming days, so. It's a classy facility that you, as a board, should be very proud of.
I have a question, but I don't, if others have questions, I'm all right. I was pretty certain that the last time we heard about this program, the discussion was one card per family, and the reason I remember that is my concern that mostly, you can sign up for cards during the business day, and my concern was, if the spouses are working, they can't go in, and so, I thought the response is, well, it's only one per family, so it doesn't matter. So, my question is, if there's a working spouse and/or one spouse can get there, can they take ID for their other spouse, or does everyone physically have, if everyone has to physically report to Mr. Staub, then I don't think we can only do it during the business day. It's just not fair.
We are not only doing it during the business day. Anybody can call in and schedule an off-hours appointment. Mr. Marshall was in on Saturday and registered two folks on Saturday. It is not, and if somebody said family, it was a misspeak, and I apologize for that miscommunication.
I'm protecting.
And that was misspoken, and I apologize for that, but it is one per adult in the household, but I don't know, and I knew somebody would come up with a question that I wasn't prepared to answer. I don't know if a spouse can register for the spouse, but I can find that out and share that information out with you.
I just think it would be good to know.
So, we could come up theoretically now and just not take a key, but get the card, and then, we're set to go whenever you're up running.
Yes. Board members have access.
Without paying $5?
Yes. I was trying not to, yes, exactly.
Our badges that we already have?
Well, I don't believe you have a stripe on your badge, so we'll have to, you'll need a card.
We don't have a stripe.
So, but we'll add that to your salary.
That's the company, Mr. Saab, or go...
Main office, actually, would be much better right now, because of the registration.
Registration, okay.
Are there any other questions on the stadium access?
Someone asked me, I think I know the answer, but we have no plans or intention to alter the public access to Trojan Field. That's gonna...
We have no intention of that. I would never say that, never, and much of it depends upon the care of the facility, and it was interesting, one of the frustrated callers said, "And the field is a mess." And we said, "That's the very point of this, that people are coming in and not taking care of it." And it was, outside users use Trojan Field, and it was a mess, and the custodians came in and had to clean that up, and then, the caller said, "I get it." I mean, it was one of those, it was better understanding, so.
Can I ask one other question? You said, when the, I think, may feel it was used as a teaching station, the cars won't work. You said during practice, it's fine. There've been times in the past during maybe football games or soccer games when people were walking the track. Now, they'll still be able to do that, 'cause as a parent of one of the student participants, it always kind of bothered me that there were people walking the track during those competitions. But during competitions, that'll be public access?
I think generally, we ask them not to walk during some games, but I can't tell you that we have a set of guidelines for that. I think it's a judgment call on what level sport is being played with what number of spectators and how many people are walking or running the track. Thank you for your continued support. Ms. Mason?
Thank you. Item one is traditionally on the board, including bus drivers, and then, the next four items have to do with basically high school, it's agreements for high school to have in place for homecoming, senior awards, and to field trips. Any questions on any of them?
Get the list of bus routes and all?
At the voting meeting.
We will get those at the voting meeting.
You don't get it individually. I have it if there's any questions.
Okay. We get the list of the bus drivers, right?
We do get the list of the bus drivers and the band drivers, yes. Those have to be approved.
Right. Questions?
I'm just curious, have we taken the whole class on class trips? I think that's wonderful. But the whole ninth grade to the African-American Museum and the whole 11th grade to see Miss Saigon, is that a new function?
The, the whole 11th grade, yes. They've gone in segments to different things, and the whole class to the African-American History Museum is new.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anything else for Ms. Mason? Ms. Atkinson, welcome back.
Thank you.
Now that I've completely embarrassed myself this evening, do you have anything to share?
Do. I first and foremost want to thank the board for allowing me to sit in on these meetings as a school board steward representative. I'm really honored, and one of my goals in life is to hopefully sit on a board as a member, and so, I think that what I will take from this year and learning and growing from you, I can only imagine how much that will help me in future, so I thank you for that. I, for my report, obviously, summer is coming to a close. There's a lot of mixed emotions from students. I mean, I would say that most are sad and complaining that summer went too fast, and the toll of summer work that they have likely not started or have barely started is definitely putting a lot of pressure and stress on students, but at their own fault. However, there's a lot of excitement that schedules are coming out tomorrow, so just kind of getting into routine and starting the school year is exciting, along with being stressful. As Dr. Merkel said, the fall sports are amping up. The first day of mandatory practice is August 14th, however, a lot of students have already begun to go to practice daily, five times a week, such as football, cross-country, tennis, et cetera. Band camp has also started. It started last Thursday. It's eight hours a day. The show theme is space, and we have happily welcomed eighth graders to our band to hopefully improve our numbers, as over the past years, the band has sadly dropped in numbers a lot. So, we're adding eighth graders, and we're trying to really promote the addition of them and any friends that they have, and in future years, the band can hopefully improve their numbers. Matt Chomen, who's senior, and I are the drum majors, so we're really optimistic about the band season, and yes. As for Link Crew, this is the program that helps incoming freshmen on the first day of school. They take them on tour of the school, they kind of get them involved in any clubs they might want to participate in. They are gonna be having two five-hour sessions this Thursday, this Friday, and Saturday to prepare for the incoming freshmen on Wednesday. Students are really excited about the new turf field, as you said. I heard a little bit of backlash from students that their parents were complaining about the $5 price tag. However, I really don't think that that's a bad thing at all. I mean, it's going towards the security of the school and towards keeping a better-quality field and a safer field. I know that going out at gym class, I've seen a lot of people walking around and playing on the field, and it's a little bit odd, so that extra security is definitely something that I appreciate. As for Student Council, last Friday, Penn State, fourteen student council members went to the Penn State Mini-Thon Leadership Conference. This was to celebrate the accomplishments of all of the mini-thons across the country. Over $6 million were raised through mini-thons, which is over half of what the Penn Over $6 million were raised through mini-thons, which is over half of what the Penn State Thon makes with their annual celebration. So that was a really big accomplishment. As you know, we raised $70,000 last year. I'm really involved in the planning of that and I'm really proud of it. So unfortunately, I couldn't go because I was at band camp, but it was something that a lot of students appreciated and they really loved the conference. Student Council is well on their way to planning another great mini-thon. We have our first fundraiser, which is called Movie Night on August 25th. We're playing Moana. We have a Hawaiian theme and it's open to the entire community, so strongly suggest coming out, it'll be a lot of fun. We are also planning homecoming, however, that's not till the first week of October, so first and foremost, we're planning Movie Night. Ryan Ludley, who's a senior, will be attending Stanford to play soccer this year, or not this year, but next year. And obviously, this is a huge accomplishment for him, but also for the school. It really shows that his education and what he's accomplished in high school and, I mean, all throughout his years at Suburban, has really shown what a great school that we are and how, how you can really show, sorry, just that we are, we go to a great school and colleges are realizing that and taking note of that. Obviously, I won't be able to tell you all about the great accomplishments that seniors are going to be doing this year, as far as what colleges they're going to, but this was just the first one I heard of and it's obviously really big, but I haven't heard of someone going into Stanford in a long time, so I wanted to let the board know about that. Outside of the high school, this week, Yorkshire and Valley View are going to be having a kindergarten playground and pop schools. I'm assuming it's like an ice cream social, where they can meet some friends and meet their teachers and maybe get a tour of the school, so that's exciting. And freshman orientation will be Thursday evening and they will get a tour of the school, hear from some teachers and students, and hopefully get themselves mentally prepared for going back to school on Wednesday and meeting their link crew. That is my report. Thank you.
How many band members?
I believe 60.
Can I ask a question? Are you on Link Crew or not?
I am on Link Crew.
I have a favor to ask. I had a friend who came in as a senior last year and it was very difficult for her the first day because everything was so very focused on the freshmen. So just to keep your eye out, if there are any new upperclassmen, she ended up having to take three gym classes to graduate because she didn't have enough gym where she came from. It was fine, she had a great year. But I, you know, three social studies and three gym and English, I think that was her senior year at Suburban. But it was that first day, I remember Dr. Merkel met her and she took her to the cafeteria and tried to find somebody who wasn't in 9th grade and it was almost impossible. So I just urge you to try and find who those upperclassmen are.
Yeah, thank you.
Because they have a different kind of transition.
A new addition to Link Crew is we created a smaller committee within it that will help incoming students that come in the middle of the year because obviously that's just a really hard transition.
Oh, yeah.
Coming right into school and nobody's really going to stop, you know, full force. So we have created a smaller committee for that and I believe that we have a committee for upperclassmen that are coming in on the first day as well.
Oh, that's cool.
I will definitely.
That's just, that's just a personal request. Anything else? Thank you.
Yes, we have minutes are provided and we met last week, heard some information about the new STEAM curriculum. I guess that's grades 5 through 8. Did I have that right?
You do.
Which is very exciting, a new curriculum that's being started there. But if you have any questions or concerns, I suggest you can review those minutes that are in our confidential section and let us know if you have any questions or concerns. As of now, our meeting on the 27th, I guess we'll put that on hold and discuss as to whether or not that's going to happen, but that is mentioned in the minutes. But other than that, I guess that concludes my report.
I would like to add a comment, if I may. We did do a presentation on the STEAM curriculum, 5th through 8th grade. It's a new initiative in the district. Not brand new, but it's much more targeted and focused. We received information from the York Suburban Education Foundation early last week that a donor had stepped forward and would be interested in making a $10,000 donation with various, not very, some parameters to it. But one of those parameters was that the money needed to be spent by December 31st and that only, not more than $999.99 could be attributed to overhead costs. And so I put this out to our building principals and some of our most creative teachers. And by Friday, we submitted a plan that will enhance the STEAM education at the middle school with some really exciting projects, including building an outdoor learning station with the construction of solar energy panels, the installation of solar energy panels and a compost area for our cafeteria. But the solar energy panels that will actually provide energy, probably not to light the whole middle school, but provide some energy that the students can see the fruits of their labor. Every middle school student will participate in some way, shape or form with this project that will be in place by December 31st. Now, the Education Foundation must have the grant approved at their next meeting. So pending approval by YSEF, it's just a really exciting opportunity. And to see our leadership pull that off in five very busy days of the year was really pretty exciting. So looking forward to adding that.
That's cool.
And we'll keep the board updated.
Thank you very much. Mr. Toman, we have a policy committee agenda this evening.
Yes, we do. We have minutes from our May 2nd meeting and then we have a myriad of policies that are up for approval. The first two, enrollment of students and eligibility of non-resident students are really the only two where there was significant changes to the language and a lot of that was actually shifting between the two policies. So not really changing intent of the policies, but clarifying it and putting the language in the correct policy. So the remainder of the policies that were reviewed have very minor revisions, nothing substantive in there. Does anyone have any questions on any of the policies?
I have a question on the inhalers and the epinephrine pens, the Epi-Pen. It says that they have to be considered competent and capable of doing, you know, administering this by themselves. Who actually reviews them in the building? A nurse checks this?
Sorry, who reviews?
That the students are competent and capable of...
The physician must sign off to that end.
Okay, but if you read this policy, it says somebody in the building is somehow going to have to be involved to make sure that they are, that was my feeling, it should be up to the physician. Because if somebody in the building were to say, oh, you know, we don't feel you should be doing, administering this yourself, it kind of defeats the purpose of the Epi-Pen.
I'm not sure where in the policy that you're seeing...
And I have to say, I'll go back and see if I can find that.
And I'd be happy to answer that question for the whole board once, once used.
There was something in there that led me to believe that it was going to be somebody on top of already getting the script from the...
The nurse is certainly aware of who's carrying Epi-Pens and ensuring that the parental and physician paperwork, absolutely. That can't happen without the nurse oversight. But anything beyond that, at a quick glance as I'm speaking?
And I may have, you know, I may have misread that, other than that, you know, the nurses just to make sure that they know who's got what and where. I'll go back and see if I can...
If you look at the beginning, under definitions, where it says self-administration, it defines self-administration and it says with a prescription or written instructions from a licensed physician?
I don't remember where I saw it. Just maybe stop and think because it's not going to do anybody any good not to be able to administer it themselves. If you've got to go find somebody to do it, kind of, you know, it defeats the purpose of the Epi-Pen. But let me go back and see if I can see where I was reading as I was getting through these policies.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's under guidelines to, um, scroll down through it. 3H.
Anything else for Mr. Toman?
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And are there other committees that have reports this evening? Mr. Posenow's shaking his head, Mrs. Fryrick, Mrs. Schaefer. Okay, moving on, By Dawn's Early Light is linked from the LIU. We won't ask Mr. Robinson to interpret it since he's no longer driving to New Oxford. Mrs. Fryrick, is there a York Adams Academy report?
No, other than that the school actually begins for teachers on the 14th and the 15th to see the report.
Thank you. Mr. Schrader, how about York County School of Technology?
No report, other than encouraging you to read the minutes that are provided. School starts, I believe, the 23rd is the first day for students. And to, again, thank Mr. Posenow for attending the last meeting in my stead. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Are there other questions about the board meeting schedule or the committee meeting schedule? And it's fairly obvious to all of us, but as I put this on my calendar, I suddenly realized that in both the months of September and October, we're meeting on the 2nd and the 4th, Monday's not the 1st and the 3rd. Makes sense, it's every two weeks. But just to remind board members of that. And you will be notified by Ms. Erwin whether or not the committee meetings will, we'll send an email whether it's canceled or whether it is going to happen, right? If it's going to happen, you'll send out, the agendas will go out.
Either way, you'll hear.
You'll hear. Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Anything from the public, sir? Then I'll adjourn this meeting. We do have another executive session, but let's take about five minutes.